Let me set up for recording. Right?
You are recording, Janelle?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call the Plan Commission Work Session Meeting to order on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Janelle, could you please take roll call?
Burdo.
Here.
Zaskey.
Here.
Shumway. Here. And Schmitz.
Here.
Gretzsmacher and Ward are excused and Belle is going to be a bit late.
Okay, comments, correspondence, and concerns from the public. Did we receive any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Motion by Zaskey.
Second.
Second by Schmitz. All in favor respond with an "I."
I.
Opposed, carried, approval of the minutes as published. I did, I did not go through all of them with the fine tooth comb, but I did find a couple of things that have not been changed. On page seven. E3 and E4 should be pervious surface. And then on page eight, number two, there's congregate housing down in the paragraph that should be deleted. So if we need to make those adjustments on the...
Yeah, I'll just make them a wire attachment.
The share drive.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve as amended. Motion by Burdo.
See, Nate's joining in right now.
Second.
Second by Zaskey. All in favor respond with an "I."
I.
I. Opposed, carried. Item number one, consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin stats, 19.85 sub 1 sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conduct other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and Wisconsin State Stats 19.85 sub 1 sub G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Motion by Burdo.
Second.
Second by Shumway. Roll call.
You're muted, Nate.
Burdo.
Yes.
Belle.
Yes.
Ward. Our ward is not here, sorry. Schmitz.
Yes.
Shumway. Yes. And Zaskey.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, at 6:04, we're in closed session. Just a, just a quick question. Why do we always have? I'll make a motion that we return to open session at 6:27. Motion by Burdo.
Second.
Second by Zaskey. Burdo, yes?
Hell, yes. Schmitz, yes.
Shumway, yes.
Zaskey, yes.
Okay, so after talking with counsel, where is it that we should start, Beau? Sharing your screen. Back at the beginning on all conditional uses or what?
I have the entire, the entire zoning code, the highlighted section. So if you want to do that and start there and just go through to determine, you know, what is impacted by conditional uses, we can do that.
Okay.
I'm just gonna give this a minute because it's the full document.
Page six, it was the first one.
Yep, I'm gonna do this. Have to move everyone over. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Two-thirds of it, yeah. Or three-fourths of it.
You can move that, you can move where the people show up, Rob.
Okay. Yeah. Yep. Okay. Okay.
I mean, I I think that needs to stay there just because it's talking about use restrictions.
Yep.
Isn't this the, you don't have this as the red highlighted?
No.
That's not the first one that I have under K. I have it under C.
Yep, yeah, that's the one you're talking about.
Okay. So that's just talking about...
It's there. It's something, a tool that we have.
Yeah, it just requires review. Public hearing and approval.
Right, so that's just talking about it, doesn't, not to any specific...
Okay.
And then this is the next one, under K, parking lots.
So I think this could be one of those cases where it's almost tied to parking, at least in my brain, the payment in lieu of parking. Do we want people to believe that they can get around picky parking issues because conditional uses are out there in parking lots?
Give me an example of what you would be referring to, Dave.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that, do you ever want to do a conditional use on a parking lot?
No, I don't.
And because otherwise, we're gonna get into this whole, I Egg Harbor is up on the wall in my brain right now. So I guess I would say pull this.
I mean, this is only from the ordinary high watermark.
Correct.
Because if you look back at the main section, it's setback requirements from the water, but I think that would be one that I would be willing to delete.
Was that put into place for something like the yacht club at Sister Bay when it was built? Or I'm trying to figure out where that actually came from.
You know, that, that could have been there for a long, long time, even previous to me. I do not remember. It doesn't give, it does not give an amended version, so I'm venturing to bet this has been in there for a long time because all the amendments, it usually will say at the end of the paragraph when it was amended. So it looks like that's never been changed. Am I correct, Janelle, in thinking that way?
Yeah, if that would have been revised, it would be at the end of sub key.
Okay, so I think that's been there forever. And I don't know that we've ever used it.
Let's get rid of it. Right.
Do we just want to strike? Okay. You just want to strike from however to the end?
Yes.
I'm good with that. You know?
Not, not the whole thing, Beau.
Okay, going back.
It still says that it has to be 75 feet. The first sentence is okay.
Well, do you can, can you think of a situation wherein the DNR wouldn't require any impervious surface to be 75 feet back? Does it need to be in there?
Well, I think it does need to be in there.
Just, just so people see it and get it, okay?
I don't think 75 feet is enough. I'm just, I'm just playing Google, Google Maps here just to look at it, just to see what that actually equates to, but looking at example of how far the Sister Bay Beach Parking Lot is, I think the Sister Bay Beach Parking Lot is too close to the water personally.
And, and did you measure that roughly, Nate?
It's about 100, 130 feet.
Wow, so this would be even closer.
You know, where we definitely have one that is not compliant is gonna be the parking by that boathouse.
Or the marina. Yeah.
Yeah, but there, there's all kinds of issues with impervious surface that's close to water. It's not good for the water. I mean, I've got a whole lot of things where I just don't like parking lots in general, but that close to the water, I think that 100 feet would be reasonable, 150 feet I think would be better. Same point, how often are people trying to put parking lots that close to water? It's just not a reasonable thing to do.
Just look at private property along the waterfront in Sister Bay, and they're mainly residential. Especially now, Fuzzies is, you know, not a business anymore.
I, I have no problem increasing it.
You might have changed it to I heard 100 feet before. Was there other discussion?
125 based on the corner of the Sister Bay Beach Parking Lot to the water. This looks like this is probably that's probably pretty close to the high watermark. I can cross-reference with the GIS.
Okay, I think that's fair then.
Shorter point, it looks like about 130 feet.
125 would be solid. I mean, it looks, yeah. That's what I, what I, what I'd like to see is 125.
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
Okay.
Do you have anything that contradicts that in your smart growth plan? Do you have specific setbacks for ordinary high water, wetlands, anything like that?
We have to redo this also. I know that there wasn't it talked about things to do, you know, in the zoning code. I don't know that there was true criteria of specifics like that, Mary Kay, in the comprehensive plan.
Just asking a question.
Yeah, that's a good question. I will make a note to myself to look that up in, in the comprehensive plan.
I just took a glance. There's a section in Shoreland and Floodplain Ordinances, chapter eight, section, or, uh, chapter eight, page 14. It's really focused on wetlands, but it's, it's similar to the language that was written that said, navigable water shall be 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark. Navigable waters, which the setback ordinances regulate, include lakes, rivers, ponds, et cetera, that support navigation by recreational craft on an annually recurring basis. So in the complaint.
And that's 814 Shoreland and Floodplain Ordinances?
815.
815.
Second paragraph.
Is that going to apply to the Casperson property?
That's exactly what I was thinking about.
Well, Nate, can you do that quick measurement there?
Of the Casperson?
It's like 100 and, wait, let's just do this. But I'm just estimating it's like 180 feet from the edge of the water.
Yeah, I guess I was more asking is, does that pond in back then qualify?
Yes, it does under the definition.
Yeah, it's wetlands.
But I was, I was told that the only, I think Greg Casperson talked about this, helped me remember that he said the only reason that that pond is wet is because they have a pump that feeds it from the bay.
It's showing on the GIS map, under wetlands, it says it's an excavated, excavated pond, and then Onika's property next to that is an undelineated wetland, less than two acres. It's not showing up. It looks like they do manage it. I know they have a a pump that goes to a line out to the bay. So I don't believe that is technically considered wetlands. It looks like it's been, it's been managed.
It doesn't freeze the entire winter, so it might even be spring fed too.
Yeah, man-made spring with the pump. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't want to do, do anything to, you know, to make developing that property more of a challenge. But I, but I think we'll be okay if, if they're feeding the water in there.
The bay won't impact it as long as that pond wasn't impacted. And when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it in the JS2, and it's, it does not, I can't imagine that was counted as a navigable waterway.
When we were having high water issues when I arrived in 2019, I actually walked the back of that pond with Greg Casperson and Lars Johnson, and I don't, I don't ever remember it going up at all during those times. That, that water level never changed.
You have to remember though, we are not the ultimate authority on that.
Yeah.
The DNR, the DNR deemed that ditch in Bailey's Harbor, a navigable wetland, excuse me, as actual a navigable stream. The one that goes across by the Ridge's Motel.
Yep.
That was about 12 years ago. So I, I mean, we are not necessarily the ultimate authority on...
So let's Beau, make a let's make a phone call to the DNR. And get some clarification.
Are we just clarifying for this pond specifically?
Well, let's frame what, what my goal with this would be to keep parking lots 125 feet away from Green Bay. So anything beyond that would be unintended, in my opinion.
All new parking lots? I'm just thinking, does it become then a grandfathered, non-conforming use for the existing ones?
Oh.
In my opinion, I would, I would put the word new in there. If you're gonna change this language up, any, you know, new parking lots need to be at least...
That's, that's always a given. You don't have to write new because when we change the code and there's a copy of the code and there's anything existing, it's always grandfathered. So I don't think you have to put in new. That, that's a given when you change the code.
Yeah. Yeah, any existing would just be grandfathered in.
Why don't we just say parking lot shall be setback at least 125 feet from the shores of Green Bay?
That would do it for me. That would...
From the shoreline of Green Bay.
From the ordinary high watermark of Green Bay, yeah.
I would line out of it and just leave it as high watermark.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with this, how this is written. All right. So I'm just scrolling down to the next one.
So this is on page 10 of the code. And I, I remember when we put this in the code back in 2017, it looks like. Because housing was changing and they were going to be family dynamics were changing, and I would say it still continues to change. But on this second dwelling unit overlay district, all anybody is, I don't think it's working out the way that I thought it should. You know, surprise, surprise. You know, the, the person a couple of houses down from me, you know, so he's currently renting out the main home, but now he's building the second dwelling unit, you know, that he wants to live in. So you're getting this VRBO thing, and now he's gonna have a permanent residence instead of just living in the house himself. So I'm not a fan of this anymore.
But Denise, the end result of that is you still have a resident living in Sister Bay on their property, which I would say is a net good thing. I, I guess I think that we should let second and third housing units on all of those districts as a permitted use with the caveat that you can only have one of those units be short-term rental. Or maybe when you go to three units, you can't have any of them short-term rental because this, this sort of thing is exactly the unpleasantness that we need to deal with to combat the, the housing shortage. And this is what a lot of other, I mean, there's a lot of places out there where R1 is no longer single-family houses, where the minimum number of units you can build is three units on it. That, that's happening all across the country.
Right, right. And, and if it was, if there's a way that we can change the wording to get what it is that we want instead of just, you know, more VRBO, I'm all for that. I, I do think that there is a use for it. People just aren't necessarily all using it that way.
Well, let me ask a question. What if the three units, if, if somebody was going to take, add two units to their property, the third, you know, one of those two additional units could be short-term rental. We permit a second one, but that essentially in a manner that means it has to be long-term or, you know, annual lease, lease to a, lease to, to a resident or what have you. That if there was going to be the desire of somebody doing this to have VRBO or Airbnb or short-term rentals, they would have to essentially build a third one for that.
I don't know how I feel about three. You, you like the idea of three, Nate?
I think that it's, we have to do something a little bit more extreme to, to do something to make this housing issue resolve itself. And I think that I'm a little leery of taking away the ability to have a single VRBO unit on, on a residential lot because there's a number of people that have already added to that. That's how, that's how this person who's down the street from you may be, that may be their method of still living in Sister Bay. And I wouldn't want to deny them that, but at the same point, I think that we need to let people do more in a smaller area more densely so that we can get this affordable housing, not just through weeding housing, but also organically.
Nate, right, right now, you won't, April statistics just came out. This isn't unique to Sister Bay or Durham County. It's all over the nation right now. It, it's, it's, it's a I don't even know what to call it, but it's, it's everywhere.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, Nate, and, and using the guy down from me as an example, if that's the only way that he can live here. Well, then maybe he shouldn't have bought the property to begin with and taking it out of the, um, the housing stock. You know, that maybe somebody else could have bought. You know, i- if he needs that, if he needs that rental income, you know, to offset his mortgage, and then he builds a second dwelling of 900 square feet, well, and maybe I'm just crass and ornery.
So what, what if we just say if you want that second or third dwelling unit, you give up your ability to do VRBO? We just say you can do that second rental and third unit. Because at some point, you, that, that person has got to make the decision, and maybe that's what it comes down to. I guess I'm more concerned about making sure that we have increased density, not so concerned about the short-term rental because that's gonna take care of itself. There's that's not something I feel like we have to worry about shepherding.
If, if, if the, if the good-hearted theory was John Smith and his wife own a small home and their kids have come back from college and are trying to make good go of it here, but they don't have anywhere to live, so John Smith wants to build a place that they can live in on the same property. It, to me, that's the type of thing, you're, the, the type of example you're getting at, Denise, that initially drove this. Is that kind of a theory?
Well, or aging parents.
Yes, right, right. Family members, so first...
Or even a long-term rental.
For, for people, you know, for people who would, who would use, who, who would fit into the category of I need to be able to take care of my family in this manner, those are the ones that will take care of their family with the second dwelling and not be concerned about the, the third one that is the one that would, you would allow short-term leasing in. If somebody wants short-term leasing, if somebody wants short-term leasing so badly that they'll put up a second structure that they have to do a long-term lease on or use as a garage or whatever, God bless them. If somebody legitimately wants to take care of their family, their parents or their kids, whatever, then there's the avenue. So then we would, in that instance, we would go from having one residential unit to having two residential units on the property. And if, and if somebody's dead-set on VRBO or short-term rental, then they've got to build a second structure. And, you know, what they do with that second structure will take some monitoring maybe, but then the third one is their short term.
Well, Denise, would it, if, if you were to go to...
Let me, let me just finish one thing, Nate. To your point then, Nate, in that, in that, for instance, if I'm tell, if somebody wants a VRBO so bad that they'll build the third unit, then chances are, they're not gonna want that second unit that they built for family members. So they will be driven to try and say, okay, you know what, I'm gonna make so much money off of the third one being VRBO, then I'll, you know, do a, an, an annual lease on the second one. And then you've got a, a new dwelling that for a couple or for a single person who wants to come and work here and become part of the community, but can't afford to buy a house, they could afford to rent a 900-square-foot single.
What were you gonna say, Nate?
Would, would it alleviate your concern if you simply, by when you went to a second or third, one or two units, one or two additional units on the property, you gave up any right to do it? One or two additional units on the property, you gave up any right to doing a short-term rental?
Yeah, that, that would be better. Let me, let me throw something else at you and, and I'm so sorry that this is going to be a NIMBY. And so I have a pretty, pretty large lot that fronts up back to Scan's property and in Canterbury Road. And so, uh, so do my neighbors on either side. I think everybody along here owns all that property in the back. So all, all of us, because our homes are closer to Maple Drive, have all this property in the back and we could put up second and third homes and there could even be some access off of Canterbury, you know, and, and not just Maple. Depending upon placement. I bought, I bought this piece of property for multiple reasons, you know. I don't know how many years ago, 40, 40 some years ago. And the last thing that I really want is for what I have created and built here, whether it's in my landscaping or whatever, to think that there could be one or two more units next door to me with an awful lot more activity. And there could be three families, all with children. I'm past children. And that changes, even though I have a relatively larger lot, that changes my property, what they do with theirs. And I hate that I'm, you know, doing the thing not in my backyard, but I also have to be cognizant on other people would probably feel that way also. I understand that there's a housing issue. I understand that R1 is part of the problem. But is there, is there another way that we can address this instead of changing what people have come to? Come to believe what their neighborhood looks like and who their neighbors are and it's single family and I mean, the one neighbor on my side, you know, they don't even live there periodically, they rented out, but not very often. So do you understand where I'm going with that Nate? Can you, can you talk me, you know, off that cliff?
So Denise, the, the only thing in this world.
I just, I just have one comment here and it's very important. You're starting to tiptoe around fair housing issues and I am a Realtor. Please do not use the word family or children or anything like that in regards to zoning. We, we try not to differentiate between any class. So I'm just trying to steer the conversation to, to a far more neutral mode than this.
Okay Nate.
Give me a moment here, I want to, want to try to figure out where I was going with that, so. Um. The, the only thing that is constant in this world is change. And if you look at the village right now, it is not the village that I moved into. I happened to move to Sister Bay 25 years ago last week. It's a much different place. It's better, it's worse, it's different, and there's going to constantly be change here. And I look around to see who it is that's, that's moving here now. And there's, there is no component of it that is, there's very small component of that are people that live in the village. And I understand that you were fortunate enough and I was fortunate enough to, to get access to housing before this last boom real, or the last two booms really exploded on us.
Right.
There's a lot of people that aren't going to be in that situation and we are going to have nothing but a a commuter workforce in the near future and I can I can appreciate what you're saying. I would also say that when it comes to increasing increasing the, the, the housing stock, there will be some times where it is unpleasant and there are some non-positive side effects to it. But to try and keep our, part of the character of the villages is because there are a number of residents here, but as as the people 20, 30 years older, they're going to start to, to die off and move and, and go and just we're going to lose that character altogether. And I think that's what I'm really concerned about and I hear what you're saying. You know, I just had, you know, there's, there's houses that are popping up all around me. There's one that I can see in my backyard, a lovely, a lovely backyard where I could only see one house for a long time. Well, now there's, there's two houses that have gone up within a few blocks. I mean, you know, Rob, you've seen that too, there, that's just unfortunately what's, what's going to happen there.
But, but those, the, those houses just went up on single lots. I, what, what Denise is saying is going to be tied to when we talk later this year, whenever about the VRBO issues. If somebody buys a lot that big in an R1 district, they're buying with an expectation of privacy and density. And then they know, they didn't buy next to an airport, they didn't buy next to a marina, they bought in a residential area that allows one house per. So we have to be careful, I think, that, and again, you know, somebody on North Spring Road who bought a house because they wanted to be close to downtown, but have some level of privacy or quietness or whatever, if they're suddenly encircled with VRBO units, that's something that they didn't expect. I'm not sure if I should be tying the two together, but I do think we should be careful about putting residential houses or R1 house, housing more dense than what the person purchased the property for.
I fundamentally think R1 zoning is, is a mistake, just to get that out there. And I, I appreciate what you're saying David. But that's my, that is part of the problem that we're living with today.
You mean the lot size Nate, to clarify?
Um, yeah, I mean, when, when, when we're in a village like this that is, i- i- it is trying to have density without having density. It's straddling the, the, the worst of both worlds and I, I think that this is not, this is not just a Sister Bay thing and I didn't just come up with this without having some some digging into this and to hearing from other sources on here, there's a lot of, granted, there are more urban areas that are mandating. R1, you can't build a single unit there, you have to build at least three units. I think that's probably a little bit far for us, but I really feel like we need to look at what, what it is we're doing. We are complicit and part of this, this housing issue in Door County.
Okay, I, I'm okay leaving it a second one, but changing the wording that nothing can be VRBO. Okay. You know, I, I am very uncomfortable with the third, maybe time, maybe that's for a future plan commission when I'm, you know, off this commission or dead and gone, um, as times change and we get used to other things. Um, you know, maybe my opinion will change. But yeah, I like the idea because I know the guy down the street from me said, well, does that mean, you know, when we said that he, his, the new 900 square foot, you know, that he couldn't rent out and he was very afraid that he couldn't, you know, rent out the main house. And we said, well, that's not how the code reads now. But if we change that, I think we get more of the, the intent that we're looking for and I'd be very happy with that. And if sometime in the future, you know, you go back, you see how Sister Bay is not just the commercial districts are changing, but also the residential districts, you know, that I'd feel more comfortable just leaving it the way it is with one additional, with no, neither, neither, um, houses can be rented out.
So why is it just making permitted use and not a conditional use?
I think your point David, that having it as a conditional use, it is almost a permitted use, so I, I can understand what you're saying there. That we still keep that small barrier there.
Right.
Rather than see it not go there, but if that helps, you become comfortable with it, I'm, I'm okay, I'd be okay with that. Okay.
I mean, I still would like, you know, the the public hearing for, you know, neighbors to be aware instead of over-the-counter permit. Um, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's excavation going on and the neighbors, you know, have no idea. Not that they can do anything necessarily about it, but you know, just, just be aware. But as, as long as we restrict both both units to, you know, either owner occupied or, or long-term rental, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Why would that wipe out the conditional use though? I think they're two separate things. I mean, as you say, if it's, if you just use the word permit, it's an over-the-counter allowed use. I, I think we're all in agreement that when this was drafted in 2017, there was a very different intent than what has been going on. There's, there's no doubt about it. I don't know where that third residence came from in a residential second dwelling unit overlay, but it was, it was great conversation. I, I think that it, it sounds as though everybody kind of has a consensus toward the same thing, but do you leave building the second unit altogether as a conditional use? And then would one of the restrictions be that we have somewhere else in the code that ne- neither of these can be short-term rental?
I think we add that wording in here.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that once, you know, somebody is you know, you're looking under standards. You know.
Primary or second dwelling unit? Both the primary and second dwelling units may not be rented short-term.
You have to be careful too, because the law doesn't allow us to prohibit short-term rentals on residential property. That's what I, I haven't really said anything because I'm trying to wrap my head around the end goal here. You know, Act, I, I believe it's Act 50, yeah, Act 59. You know, put some limitations on what a municipality can do with short-term rentals.
Right, but if they want a conditional use permit for a second one, I mean, we can ask Randy about that if you just want to notate this somewhere, maybe under standards and you know, to get clarification from Randy for our next meeting. The other, the other question that I had is that, let me put my glasses on. The square footage of the second dwelling unit shall not exceed 30% of the footprint of the primary dwelling, excluding the garage or 900 square feet, whichever is larger. Are we still comfortable with the, you know, the maximum of, of 900 square feet for a, a second dwelling?
I think that still makes sense here, it would help us achieve the, the goal. I mean, if we just have somebody that builds two houses that are identical and one that's not smaller, I don't think it's going to necessarily help the.
Right. I just didn't know if we wanted to make it smaller. If, if 900, you know, is, I mean, that's a good mother-in-law apartment or that, a pretty good size. Beau, do you know the square footage of the apartment that you're living in?
Um, I think they go down to 980. They're 980 and 1100.
So roughly 1,01100. So, okay, knowing that, that this is now a dwelling unit that's a little smaller than a two-bedroom apartment. It's been a long time since I've been in 1,000 square feet.
I will schedule a tour if you want to.
Well, I was just going to say, do you feel that your apartment is, is spacious?
No.
Okay.
Is it adequate?
Yes, it's adequate. I mean, obviously I've lived there for two years. I mean, I don't complain because of the limitations.
When you took me there to show me the place, your bed fit out on the balcony deck just fine, I thought.
I mean, I, to answer the question, it's adequate. You're talking about two bedrooms though. If, if you're talking about a secondary dwelling unit and they can be one bedroom, I would say that 900 square feet is, you know, appropriate for a one-bedroom.
Okay.
I, I would hate to see a 900 square foot unit be a two-bedroom. I, I couldn't even imagine.
Okay, so basically then that's by saying that 900, we're looking at one bedroom. It's an elderly parent, it's a child who's come home, it's it's somebody who works up here or is a, you know, they're, a couple can live in a one-bedroom. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that while we were reviewing this section, that we, we felt good about that 900 square feet.
Well, the county allows a secondary residence not to exceed 749 square feet, but that does not include storage or a garage. Storage is closets, it can be attic storage. Um, I, I wanted to bring this up. Last fall I sold a landmark unit, it was two-bedroom, two-bath kitchenette. It was 819 square feet. It was it, it wasn't sizable by any means, but it was perfectly adequate for the use that you are describing.
Okay.
More than adequate.
Okay, alright, good.
Okay, do you want me to just continue? I, I really wouldn't want to touch anything in the RSOD until I talk to Randy, just to make sure, you know, I have some clarification on what we can and can't do.
Sure.
I did write a note here on the side, I didn't write it on this document.
Or, you know, and one of the things that you could ask him is if, you know, we can't restrict the, the first dwelling unit, we can only restrict to the second. Then find out if there's another avenue, other verbiage or, or something to, to work around.
How many times has this been taken advantage of since 2017?
A handful, mostly.
I was going to guess eight.
Wow.
Been a few.
Secondary.
I believe since I, it's been three or four, Rob.
Yeah.
And, yeah, yeah, I think it's three or four. Okay.
See, it's under P where you have the teeth because you're making people record restrictive covenants that, you know, th- there is, there is some teeth in some of these areas.
Under, oh, under D, covenants and restrictions?
The only issue with those covenants and restrictions, some people raised a stink about them and said, we don't, you can't make us do that because of that act. So now what we do is we, we record a list pendants.
Interesting.
How do you spell that, Janelle?
It's L-I-S, capital P-E-N-D-E-N-S.
Okay, so then that covenants and restrictions, then we need to change that verbiage, correct?
Probably, yeah. Because it would be that the, you'd have the village clerk see that appropriate, you don't want to say less pendants, you would just want to say that appropriate documentation is recorded in the office of the Register of Deeds for Door County.
Okay.
Trying to stay consistent with the color.
And it's basically the same thing.
The list, yeah.
Okay.
And then if they would go to sell the property, it would show up as a restriction against the property.
Okay.
Basically a list pendants is a notice to them.
Okay. Okay. So are we? So are we, um, what section are we under now, Beau? What's, okay, R1, okay. I mean, I think bed and breakfasts. Because in our definitions is a bed and breakfast, you are only allowed so many rooms. Is that correct? I'm looking it up. Any place of lodging that provides four or fewer rooms for rent for more than ten nights in a twelve-month period, well, that needs to be changed, the ten nights. In a twelve-month period is the owner's personal residence is occupied by the owner during the time of rental and in which the only meal served to guests is breakfast. So how do we feel about that?
I don't think it's gonna come up anymore, not with what, I mean, look at, um, well, let's have the, that used to be a bed and breakfast on the, near Chris Hacks house. That's just a VRBO now, I believe.
No, no, they live there. Uh, he had, he's the guy that was interested in running for village president. I talked to him, I cannot remember his name. Uh, he has ten children.
Well, before Deb sold it, I think it was a VRBO.
Oh, okay.
At some point there, I didn't. But I mean, I, I guess.
Add it, it was.
If this helps you at all, I've transferred four B, at bed and breakfasts since two thousand seventeen. Only one is still in operation. All of the rest have been turned into private residence and not VRBO or Airbnb.
Okay. So then we have, um, if we're okay with that, we'll leave that. Um, licensed community and other living arrangements, which have a capacity of at least nine, but no more than twenty persons. I don't know why we have nine in there. I guess I would like clarification on that if we keep this in there. This is like Hearth Side, is that correct?
I believe so. I, I think the nine comes from a state definition. Didn't we talk about that at one point, Janelle, when we were talking?
Yeah, but we were talking about nursing homes then. This, this is, this is, um,
Yeah, that, this was done for Hearth Side, I believe.
And what do they call that again? There's initials for it.
Um, CBRF.
CBRF, yep. Community-based residential facility?
Yep.
Okay, and maybe we should add that, that verbiage to it. And I think that Hearth Side fit nicely where it was unless anybody else has. How about and other living arrangements be deleted? Licensed community.
Slash CBRF.
Yes.
And I'll just take out the parentheses.
And then we'll clarify nine. Because I, I don't know, d- does Hearth Side have nine rooms?
I'm not sure.
We looked this up, I think two meetings ago, you brought up the state definition and the number of people.
Licensed family daycare homes, subject to the regulations set forth in Wisconsin statutes. So licensed, what is the definition of that?
My only issue with that would be is if they had to, I mean, a parking lot requirement could be pretty big and that would be pretty disruptive in a residential area that is not a residential use.
Correct. Family daycare home, a dwelling licensed as a daycare center by the state, where care is provided for not more than eight children under the age of seven for less than twenty-four hours per day. All structures shall be located a minimum of one hundred feet from any residentially zoned property. I'd be okay if we got rid of that.
That definitions would seem to conflict with that, with having it as a conditional use in a residential zone, so.
Right, right. Consensus?
Yeah.
Private parks and playgrounds.
All about leaving that in there.
What's a private park?
If you have, let's say, um, I'm trying to think of how you put like a subdivision, right, and they're all single-family homes. Um, and they have something like an outlaw or a lot that they don't want to use for a home, they can, they can install playground equipment on there and use it as a, as a park.
Or like if we ever did cluster housing that we talked about a decade ago, you cluster the houses and then have more open space.
Got it.
Then you share space, but it's privately maintained, that's not maintained by the village.
Okay, I'm good.
Alright, utility substations, I, I think that needs to stay.
I suspect there, I know there was some Wisconsin code that impacted solar energy collectors that we talked about probably twenty eighteen. I would think we should make sure we don't run afoul of that.
Under the next one.
Yeah, the solar energy collectors. As accessory structure.
Yeah, I think we'd still want that. I think we, when we talked about that, we encouraged it, but we wanted to know where the placement was gonna be, what its design was. I remember Don Howard was dead set against, uh, Point Setias in somebody's backyard, like what's in Sturgeon Bay.
I, I get what I'm saying though, is I think we need to make sure that we're in compliance with, uh, I believe there's some state statutes that that outlined what you can and can't restrict on there, so.
I'm looking at it. It says, Wisconsin statute two thirty-six dot two ninety-two, voids restrictions on planted land and prevents, um,
I guess, I guess let's, I think we should let Beau research this and get back to it.
I like this right now. Is it, cause this, I believe solar G energy collectors are in all conditional uses in all districts.
Yeah, if there, I think we, they were permitted if they were attached to a building. I think that was the change that we made in all districts.
Yeah, essentially it says, this law prohibits, um, private land use controls like deed restrictions, easements, et cetera, from preventing the installation, operation of wind and solar G, solar energy systems.
Well, that we're not doing. Okay. So utilities requiring a building is okay. Parking of a semi-tractor or other large trucks in accordance with subsections, see page ninety-two. Oh, four oh five B. So that talks about boat and trailer parking. No boat, boat trailer, mobile home, motor home, motor coaches, truck campers, camping trailers, travel trailers, fifth-wheel trailers, large utility trailers, race cars and their trailers, sport aircraft and their trailer, canoes or kayaks and their trailers, altering vehicles and their trailers, tent campers, folding campers, snowmobiles and their trailers, cases or boxes used to transport recreational vehicles or their equipment. Yard maintenance equipment and similar equipment or vehicles shall be parked or stored outside on a residentially zoned lot for more than twenty-four hours, except as provided. They can be in the rear or side yard. They can be in the front yard if they're on a driveway. Do we think that's all okay?
I guess if we're leaving it as a conditional use, it could be forced upon us. But how often has this come up? I, my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had this come up.
I don't think so either. But now that you say that, we will, Nate.
We probably should strike it then, yeah.
I mean, you're probably, let, let me put it this way, in our one district, do you want to see a semi-tractor or a large truck parked there permanently?
No.
Well, it looks like sub A, because we're referencing sub B had a phase-out clause, so. I, I guess, I, I think most R1 districts, the restrictive covenants actually would prohibit most of this.
Okay, antennas over thirty-five feet tall, because we already have them, correct? We need to leave that there.
Yeah.
That's gonna be pretty impossible to enforce. Uh, there's federal regulations that are gonna keep that as an accessory use from being enforced whatsoever. I don't even, there's, there's not a way you can really stop it, both on state and federal level.
Okay, well then we need to.
Break it.
No, we need to either make it uh, permitted use or find out what those, uh, federal and state regulations are.
Didn't we, didn't the county just change that to like a hundred last year?
One hundred and twenty. In the county zoning area, um, you know, the state changed the, the ordinance a couple, oh, I think it was twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. Um, but then also the FCC changed the OTARD rules, which pretty much lets you put up whatever sized tower you need, as long as it is a secondary use on a property um, for transmit and receive. That's really where the, the big change was. It was only a receiver antenna before. What it was is that they, they, you couldn't zone out somebody from having a TV reception antenna. And now that also includes an internet antenna.
Well, or maybe that's a simple question to Randy, even though state, the state has changed that, are we allow, are we allowed to still have them come in for a conditional use permit, which basically is a permitted use, but we just want to know placement?
Yeah, I, I would also say unofficially that I know that this has happened in the village in the last five years. And I don't think that this come to the village, so.
Well, that's not good.
I was not a party to that, I just happened to see things like that.
Okay. Alright, so clarification. Churches in an R1. That kind of really doesn't make any sense, does it?
No, parking.
I'm pretty sure we can't stop it though, because I'm pretty sure the constitution, we're gonna run afoul of the constitution if we do.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't think we can prohibit them.
Okay, can, uh, ask Randy?
Didn't that come up, Denise, because of the UU church?
That's in a commercial district.
But when they brought it in, that's when, when Bob, if I remember correctly, Bob said you can't prohibit people from worshiping how they want to worship, and then that was changed.
Okay, I still wanna, I still want to hear what the the legal argument.
I don't disagree with you, Denise. I don't want a whole bunch of people coming to the house next door, starting their church, but that is a very touchy one.
I can, I believe that we can't deny them.
Okay, I just want to hear the argument, just so I can understand it better.
I think the question to ask is how can we regulate it reasonably?
Well, parking is always the regulation that sticks everybody. Okay, accessory structures and garages. Oh, something I was going to bring up before, um, when we were talking about how many dwelling units on an R1 piece of property. Right now, somewhere in the code, you're allowed one outbuilding, an accessory structure like a garden shed, but I think you have to get permission for a second one. That kind of makes no sense if we're allowing two houses on a parcel. Just for when we get there.
Well, would this secondary dwelling unit have to be a separate standalone house? Is that all that's referring to, or could it be part of one structure that's just divided internally?
Well, we'd have to look at the definition of accessory structure. An accessory structure is a building or other structure which is customarily incidental and subordinate to a permitted principal use of a lot and located on the same lot as the principal use and does not meet the definition of a principal structure. Well, that's clear. So we understand garages.
So, I believe, a, a more clear or a little bit more of an explanation on that. An accessory structure doesn't have the utilities of a primary structure like a bathroom, shower, water, electricity, it, it can have some of those functions and features, but it doesn't have all of them.
Does not meet the definition of a principal structure. We do not have a definition for principal structure. So, are you writing that down? Oh.
Yep, I'm just looking. It's well, you know, we don't have principal structure defined.
Right, we have principal use, but not structure.
So do you want me to define a principal structure?
Yes.
Yeah. I can do that. I'm gonna highlight this, just so we don't forget to come back.
Okay.
So now this is our two multifamily.
Pretty much looks the same, doesn't it?
So bed and breakfasts would be okay. And if we tweak the licensed community.
Yeah, rest homes and golf courses in this one that we didn't have in the other one.
So three. Licensed family daycare. Oh, you just scratched that?
Oh, I was just keeping it uniform. I, just for viewer purposes, but.
Well, how, I mean, this is now multifamily.
What's a children's nursery?
It's just someone who uses, you know, a, a home as a licensed daycare that meets the state regulations.
Then why didn't we call it licensed daycare?
Well, that's what it is. A licensed family daycare home.
No, I'm talking about 104 down to 102, rest homes, nursing homes, clinics and children's nurseries.
Well, let's wait till we get there.
Okay. Not that I was trying to speed things along Denise, don't get the wrong impression.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we should delete this also. And how does anybody else feel in R2?
I guess I'm conflicted. I mean, in our. Where do we want them?
I mean, I just look at it this way, daycare is already, you know, a, a problem in Door County. Restricting their uses and locations makes it tougher for our two, at least our one, I understand. But our two, you're real, you know, you're putting more of a limitation on what could be used as a daycare.
I mean, that doesn't mean that, you know, this is a licensed family daycare. This does not. Mean that somebody can't take care of, you know, two or three children in their own home. This is seven kids.
I think you still have to be registered though, as a daycare.
If I babysat, you know. My nieces and a couple of their friends, I would not have to be licensed.
No, but if you're, if you're babysitting other people's children and charging them for it.
I think it's either three or four, if they're not related to you.
Yeah, this is a licensed family daycare. There can be a different, different place other than an R2.
Okay.
Okay.
So private parks and playgrounds would be appropriate and utility substations. Solar, we're getting info on utilities. I guess the same parking of a semi tractor.
Lose it.
Yeah. Antennas, we're getting clarification on. Okay, so now to Rob, rest homes, nursing homes, clinics and children's nurseries. If all principal structures are at least 50 feet away from any side or rear lot line.
I mean, what, what, for starters, what's a rest home?
Retirement home, retirement.
What defines a retirement home?
Okay, well, rest home has to be changed because we don't have a definition for it.
That's what I, that's where I'm, yeah, that's all I'm saying is we don't have anything to signify what that means.
So we understand a nursing home.
But is, is parking gonna be an issue with this again?
Yes. I don't know. What, what is the property that scanned is on? What is that zoned? Institutional? What is that?
The end is owned institutional, yes. I won.
Okay, I don't think any of this then belongs in R2.
I agree.
She just want to remove all these?
Yeah.
I think golf courses belong anywhere in the village that aren't already golf courses and it's just not gonna happen.
Correct.
And then churches, we're gonna check on.
Yep. Um, stop on page 18, Bo.
I can't.
Under setbacks.
Hold on one second. I cannot see page numbers.
It wasn't far past where we just were.
You're on page 24 right now, lower left.
Oh, okay. Well, then that's different. Okay, then that's different than my red line code. Okay, so we have. It's right above unit densities.
Or the R2.
Yes.
Right here.
Okay, so it, it says on setbacks, number seven, for setbacks for multi building R2 housing projects, see page 96. It's page nine. I had a note from some other time.
I can't remove that for some reason, so I'm just gonna do this.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is our three large lot residence.
Are you waiting for me? I'm sorry.
I was waiting for anybody.
Okay. So bed and breakfast, kind of the same thing. That's all right. Change the licensed community. Okay, so in a large lot residence, what, what is that, a 10 acre parcel or R3?
Um, I can tell you lot areas, five acres.
Five acres.
At least a lot width of 300 feet.
So would it be appropriate then for a daycare? In the R3? If there's that, if there's five acres?
The issue will be where they put it on the lot, but it sounds reasonable. Unless they decide to do a minimum setback on one side and put it right next to you.
So just for reference, the only place in the village with R3 right now is along both sides of Field Crest Road, but not all of it, just a portion of it.
Isn't Country Lane also? Large lot?
Or yeah, part of Country Lane. It abuts the same lots as Field, Field Crest.
So do we have general consensus that that conditional use would be okay on that much property?
Sure. Sure. Maybe on Canterbury too Denise, because that is right near those big backyards that they could have a lot of room to build on.
Yeah. Okay, so we go all the way down to.
Get rid of this.
Why is my code numbered, but what you have is not? Like number eight is parking of a semi tractor.
Probably because I have it on a Word document here. It's just.
Oh, yours has, yours has columns in it.
Yeah, yours has columns with the numbers on them. Mine don't.
Okay, all right. So would it be appropriate for a semi tractor? Or other large trucks? I think that would be okay on a five acre parcel as a conditional use.
As a conditional use, you can restrict, you know, setbacks and landscaping.
But we're not talking about setbacks and landscaping, Bo.
No, but you're talking about conditional uses.
Okay, but where does, where does setbacks and landscaping have to do with the parking of a semi tractor or other large trucks?
Well, those conditions on it, Rob.
You can impose a condition to say, I want X landscaping around it, or I want the truck to be X amount of feet away from the lot line.
Okay.
So golf courses. Are we just keeping the one that we have?
Yeah.
And get rid of this one? Keeping and raising of non domestic animals incidental to the principal use of the premises may be permitted on a non commercial basis. Subject to the following limitations.
So if you want to have two pet goats in your backyard, it's okay.
No, because they're hoofed.
Is that what we're talking about here?
Yeah, no, yeah, it says no hoofed animals.
Yeah, there's already pretty tight restrictions on which animals you can have in there.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time trying to figure out what animal you could put on there.
Well, you can have six chickens. Which is funny because they produce rather quickly.
Bonnies. Doesn't seem to. Exclude poultry. I mean, excuse me, pork, pork products. Would you want to add that? Oh, no, they're hoofed, right? Cloven hooves?
Does Mary Jo still have her pot belly?
Denise, I don't know. I'll have to ask her next.
I don't know. I haven't seen her in forever. Don't know if that little baby's still alive. So I, I think that's all okay. On, on a five acre parcel with all those restrictions. And then it says, you know, the plant commission may establish further restrictions on animals that create excessive noise. So. I think, I think that's fair enough.
What's the definition of excessive?
Good question, Rob. Complaints from the neighbors? I don't know.
I mean, we would have to, I mean, in theory, we would need to say what that means, right?
No, because excessive has a general definition to it, I mean.
And it does say in our definitions that if something is not defined, that it is the.
The Miriam.
For the purpose of this chapter, certain words or phrases shall have meanings that either vary somewhat from their customary dictionary meanings or intended to be interpreted to have a specific meaning. Words used in present tense include the future, blah, 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 blah. Any words not defined in this section shall be presumed to have their customary dictionary definitions.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you Denise.
Yep. Okay, so we're into our four.
This is our four.
Okay, where do we have our four?
We don't have our four.
We don't, but we're going to have our four soon, correct?
Actually, hold on. Let me just. Okay, you know what? Our four small lot residences, it looks like there's a little bit. Along Youngworth Court. I believe that's where those apartments are, the Niagara Ridge Apartments. There's no, you know what? This is their open space. There's nothing there on the property.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we have our four.
Yeah, I, I believe that there are four property is that empty land that they own.
Okay.
It kept as a buffer.
So.
No active R4.
Oh, you know what? Here under small lot residence, it talks about a PUD. Weren't we supposed to talk to Randy about a PUD? Tonight?
I, I emailed him, but I never got a response back. I didn't know how far we were gonna get in this meeting.
Okay, all right. So that's still on, on your list then to get back to us.
I think it's on our list in general that we wanted to go through conditional uses first and then follow up with PUDs.
Okay, well, if a small lot. I don't think a bed and breakfast is appropriate in a small lot.
Well, just remember that the small lots are only allowed as PUDs, which are planned units, planned unit developments, which means the village really comes up with the rules based off of the, the. Use that's being presented.
But that may change.
Where are you seeing bed and breakfast on this description for R4?
If you scroll down, sorry, I still have it up there. If you scroll down to conditional uses.
Okay.
So I.
I see it.
Small, the R4 section may have to change based off of whatever PUD changes to.
Right.
Well, I was just thinking, if, if, if we have, if what you sent out and what else I found in PUDs, we can strike a lot of this because everything is negotiable.
Well, yeah, essentially you can get rid of. Well, you keep the R4 district up and explain what it is, but you take the uses out because a PUD allows you to pick and choose what uses you want in as the village. The village dictates that.
Right.
So bed and breakfast is, should not apply to a, a small lot.
Well, I think what we're saying though is pull all the conditional uses.
Yeah.
Because.
I would agree with, I would just remove initially uses from an R4.
Yep.
Well, utility substations has to stay in there.
Well, it's a planned unit development though, you.
But if we get rid of the PUD, you're still gonna need conditional uses. So we still need to determine if the PUD goes away.
I see which. Okay, PUDs completely.
Right.
Then we would just solely be looking at R4s without needing a PUD.
Correct.
I, yeah, you will want to clean this up then.
So that's, so then I think bed and breakfast is ridiculous there. The same with licensed community and daycare. So private parks, utility substations, solar collectors, utilities requiring a building. And definitely not a semi tractor. On a tiny lot. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so next is CS1 Countryside District. I just wanted to look at.
Oh, countryside is 10 acres?
Yep, countryside's the 10 acres one, so much larger.
And how much of that do we have in the village, Bo?
A pretty good chunk of Woodcrest and Flint Ridge. As well as where the golf course was along South Bay Shore Drive. And then there's also some on Country Lane.
It's a big chunk.
So an assembly hall would. Could be appropriate.
Well, we just did that Denise, remember?
Yeah, yep. A bed and breakfast would be fine on 10 acres. Licensed community with the CBRF, I think would be okay there. Family daycare. Do you really think if you own a 10 acre parcel that private parks and playgrounds? Common sense wise?
You never know.
Doesn't make sense.
I wouldn't prohibit it, I just always look at parks, playgrounds as green space, you don't wanna prohibit people from keeping green spaces on their private property.
Private educational or non-animal nature study areas.
I.e. the clearing, if somebody wanted something like that here.
Yep, garden plots for rent.
Case they didn't wanna smell the water treatment plant while they were gardening.
Yeah, they're very happy out there though with their new water line. Permanent retail establishment selling fruits, vegetables and farm. Products. That makes sense. The towers, do we need to update that also Nate, the verbiage at all?
Yeah, there, there's something that's probably gonna wanna follow up.
Okay, so that needs to be updated. Cemeteries. Farm implement repair. Okay.
Is any of that ongoing right now in the village that anyone can think of? I think that can be stricken, farm implement repair.
Well, because we did do contractor in the B2. Contractor supplies and office. I mean. Right, that could fall under that in the B2. Should we add, add that verbiage? If we delete it out of, out of countryside?
But didn't we call it construction equipment repair or something like that?
There were, there were two things. Let me try to.
I think we were talking about the B1, I'm just pulling it up right now.
B1, I'm sorry.
We said supply. And trade and contractor supplies and offices.
What's, what's the consensus, leave it where it is or change it to be one?
I, I just really don't see anybody coming forward for a conditional use for farm implement repair in the village if it's that already existing.
Okay.
The B1 would be appropriate.
What if someone came and proposed a construction supply? You know, a site, like a construction site, you know what I mean, I can't even, I'm trying to think of.
Like to buy rocks or something like that?
Yeah, in, in this district. You're talking 10 acres.
May, maybe, yeah, I know nobody's doing it now, I know that there's not a lot of. People probably.
Retail, retail farm equipment and repair.
Sales and repair. Because most likely nobody's hauling their combines. Off the premises. People are coming to them to fix, I would think.
If we just view. Or we just knock it out of there.
And it's just nowhere? And we deal with it if it ever comes?
Yeah. So just remove this?
Okay.
Yep. I mean, what, what's the benefit, what is the benefit to the village? To have cemeteries in there?
You, you do run out of space, the, the, I mean.
You, you need to have a place to account for it is what you're saying, Mary Kay, yeah.
Liberty Grove does a great job with cemeteries.
That's because they're always looking actively, you know, I mean.
I mean, I have one a couple of houses down, St. Rosalia's, it's.
Yeah, but that's been there for a long time.
Countryside's the perfect place for a cemetery.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking, that's fine, I'm, 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 I don't have a problem with it.
I, I don't think that we should be doing cemeteries, I'd like to see it stricken.
No, no, where at all in the village?
I don't know, no, no new cemeteries in the village, we don't have that much space and I think we should save it for the living.
We take a vote?
Yeah, let's vote.
Janelle, do you wanna do a roll call vote for this one?
Okay, we're, we're voting to delete it.
To delete cemeteries.
Okay, from what section is that?
Countryside, but we just, you don't, we just need a vote first to see.
Okay.
It's an informal vote. At consensus.
Yep.
Okay, so you're just gonna take it, I'm just gonna say your name, okay, Bertle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, indicated. Yes to remove, no to keep.
Is that right?
Okay, Bell?
Yes.
Okay, Somway?
No.
Schmitz?
Yes.
And Zoski?
Yes.
So it's unanimous.
No, it's not unanimous.
Oh, Mary Kay was no, okay. Okay, but it's still majority, okay. Okay, so you don't want me to put this in the minutes then?
No, no, it's just by consensus.
Okay, yeah.
For discussion, okay.
So are, we're keeping golf courses?
I think we should strike golf courses too.
Okay.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Indoor/outdoor recreation.
I would keep something like this. And I'm, I know I'm the administrator, I'm not a voting member of that, but indoor and outdoor recreation, it's great for municipality, we don't have a lot of it privately. Indoor counting, something like that could be a big generator for business in, in the community.
Do you wanna talk from the community?
Just by leaving it vague like that?
Well, that, that's where the cannabis emporiums Nate's been warning us about with golf.
Ah, well, I mean, as, as I read this, like people just can't have fun in or outside there and they can't recreate.
I would just say indoor/outdoor recreation facilities, indoor/outdoor sporting.
Okay, we do not have a definition at least under indoor recreation. I thought we had it somewhere.
I hear what you're saying Bo, but there is a lot of room for a lot of. Unpopular. Things that are not the highest best use.
Well, this is a conditional use and it's. It's in a 10 acre property on the outskirts of the village.
But a conditional use is barely a conditional use anymore. I think we need to define it.
Recreational businesses.
Yeah, we need a definition, I think it.
Indoor and outdoor recreational businesses, if somebody wants to build a rock climbing wall. You know, a squash court, whatever.
I would just say.
Advocate here, I mean, one could argue that a strip club is indoor recreation.
I would just change it to.
I think we need a much better definition than that, cause that is way too wide open that we're just leaving ourselves up for. For a very, a, a, a big oh shit moment after the fact, like, oh, we didn't think of that.
Correct.
Like what? I mean, well, obviously, you know, never mind, cause I know.
Okay, where I think it's under. Is under parking, I'm zeroing in here.
What about indoor and outdoor athletic facilities, Nate?
Here, business recreational uses is the only definition, and that's under the parking requirements on page 88 in my code. Is bowling alleys, golf courses, golf driving ranges, marinas, mini golf, racket and handball. Skating rinks, ice or roller rinks, tennis courts and volleyball courts. So that's under parking regulations, so. Yeah, we need a definition to hone in exactly what, what that means. Because there's a lot of outdoor recreation that's not even listed. Under parking, like if somebody wanted to do the, the zip line.
I just think, yeah, you add something under definitions, that's just recreation, what the village defines recreation as.
Okay. So you're gonna put that in pink?
What, what, let me ask you a question.
Yeah, I'm just writing this down.
If you said indoor and outdoor athletic facilities. How would that not define it?
That is still really vague.
Yep.
Yeah.
NASCAR is a sport.
I don't know how you can allow an assembly hall in this district and not an outdoor or indoor sporting facility of some sort, I mean, it seems uniquely suited for it.
What if that outdoor recreation facility is a shooting range?
Gun.
That's where you have to have definitions because the gun club.
And that's what I'm getting at, Mary.
The municipal ordinance.
We have to think about.
Charging of firearms, so that's already protected.
So a paintball course.
You could do that, that's a sport.
I think that's a lot noisier than you realize, a lot more destructive to the surrounding area, but I think if we come up with proper definitions, I think we can frame this.
I, I think what you're looking for is a, a true definition of recreation.
Or we list it. We come up with a list.
Indoor and outdoor sports recreation facilities that are not thoroughly enjoyable.
And if we miss something on the list, because I'm sure we won't get it all. Then we'll deal with a request at some time in the future on whether or not we would wanna change the code. So you'll highlight that in pink?
Yep, I was just writing notes.
Okay.
And I'll remove my words from here.
Oh, kennels would be okay.
Now, this is in the, what district, R4?
No, countryside.
Countryside, okay.
And so roadside stands would be okay. Hotels and motels not to exceed eight separate rooms or units for rent. That just needs to be in the commercial district. Do we agree on that?
I do.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, and now we are. At, at B1.
Now we'd almost have to, I don't know that we can do a split screen because.
Yep, now we'd have to, I would say that. Essentially, what we could do is. Basically cut this off and then I'll have to add what we've changed to all these onto this document if you wanna see a clean document.
Right.
Someone.
Because we talked about apartments being allowed in B1 in existing buildings. And I.
We've already touched on the conditional uses here.
Okay. Why does, where did I read that then, was that in some other zoning district, cause I thought, I thought we changed apartments? Is that in a permitted use?
Denise, I thought we were gonna try and keep these study sessions about two hours.
Where are we at?
Eight fifteen almost.
Yeah, we can be done.
That gives me time to clean this up and put this together.
Okay. Yeah, I can't see my clock when Bo shares his, but this is a perfect place to stop. Seeing that these need to be done. Okay, so. So what I have is. Having a conversation with the DNR about setbacks and what is navigable. And specifically the Casperson property. Doing definitions for remodeling versus teardown, indoor/outdoor recreation, a principal structure. And getting an opinion from Randy on the second dwelling unit overlay. On whether or not we can restrict no VRBO in both dwelling units and also get his response to. His personal opinion about PUDs and if we should get rid of them.
I have those questions written down.
So that, I mean, along with the other notated things that you highlighted in the code, what you know?
Is that what you're gonna address at the next meeting?
I should be able to have answers by the next meeting.
Okay.
So we should put that on the agenda, or do you just wanna?
No, it'll just be part of the conversation. No, it'll just be part of the conversation. The agenda can just stay the same.
Okay.
That'll, most of those were questions for Randy, so we'll have another closed session. He may not need to be there. I can just get written answers and we can just go down the list.
Sure. Sure. Although we may want to hear from him, depending upon what his answer is on P U Ds, we may want to have a conversation about that.
Okay.
No, you haven't scheduled any further work sessions. When do you want to meet next?
Okay, so board is. The fifteenth?
Eighteenth. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at me, you're right.
Okay, and then plan commissions the 22nd?
Yep.
So.
Twenty nine.
Yikes, this is not looking good. What about? What about next Monday? We may not have all the answers from Randy, but at least maybe could you get B one, B two and B three cleaned up in a week?
I can do that.
So if we did next Monday and then we did the 28th. Which is also a Monday, get back to our Mondays. How does that work?
I'm good with both.
You said, sorry, the seventh and then the 28th.
Yeah. But David was, was the only one that said that was okay for him. What you know?
At six?
Yeah.
Okay.
The twenty, the 28th is fine for me. I can't say for sure about the seventh.
I'm the opposite, I can make the seventh, I'm not sure about the 28th.
I can do the 29th.
Mary Kay?
You're muted, Mary Kay.
Sorry, schedule dependent. I, I will attend if, if I possibly can both.
And actually, I can't do the 28th either. I'm just confirming now. I, I could do the 29th. Or if everyone else can do one of those dates Denise and I would just have to miss it, but.
Yeah, I'd just like to get back onto the Mondays. Okay, we'll leave it at the seventh and the 28th and as we know, people come and go because there's a lot of meetings. So.
If there's a, I would just say if you have a, an issue and you can't make it, message me and if we have quorum issues, I'll let Denise know and then subsequently the rest of the committee.
Right.
Well, you can count me out for the 28th, Bo.
Okay.
And, and I'll, I'll, I will. I'll let you know on the, on, on the seventh.
Oh, we would just need to make sure that Marge could make it to the 28th to have a quorum, because I know Lauren won't be able to make it.
Okay. But she might be able to make the seventh?
I don't think she'll be able to make the seventh either.
Okay, alright, so she's not, she's basically out for the work sessions. Okay, alright. Okay, we'll leave it at that and I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight seventeen, motion by Berto.
Second.
Second by Zaskey. All in favor respond with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Opposed? Carried. Thanks, everybody.
Night.
Night.
Yeah. Did you, no, we didn't.